I went back through the minutes to look forward and we couldn't find it. I remember the discussion, and that's as far as I can tell you.
I think what we did, we said that we, by law, we only have so many holidays that people that had time or whatever could take it off.
If they got some time or vacation, they can take that day off.
I believe that's what it is. If it was over yet, the office.
So we can tell them that if they've got vacations, if they've got time, they can take it off.
We just have to open up the offices. I guess that would be the difference.
Yeah.
Although they wouldn't have to.
Well, really, the department did, I guess, a good decision to point off that if their holiday staff has time, they can take off. Need to make an announcement to the public, that's their decision.
What's for me, Judge?
Wait, Dan, you got a question?
No.
You want to leave it at your decision?
Yeah.
Item six, discussion of potential action. Discussion of potential action shall occur regarding the proposed project to be conducted by Wilson County pursuant to Sen. Bill seventeen forty-seven enacted in two thousand thirteen by the Texas Legislature, chapters two-two-two and two-five-six of the Texas Transportation Code and other authorities to obtain grant funding from TechDOT for the planning, construction, reconstruction, and maintenance of public roads, bridges, culverts, and any county damaged by exploration and development of production of oil and gas.
It's a mouthful.
I guess you're on?
I think y'all are on.
Wait, again, we got no information then?
The idea would be for the court to decide.
Commissioner Wiley and Commissioner Powell, being that they had the majority of the votes against, looking into it, so y'all have a discussion that you want to?
Well, we're well into it, Judge. The, I think the, the two commissioners that are not as involved, Commissioner Gámez and Commissioner Morales, and Ricky has one project are pretty much on board. I think we've all been working with, I have, I know the format that we laid out, because one of the, one of the requirements is that we complete a road status report for each precinct and have that ready. And I know that we've gone forward with that. From my perspective, I've identified all of my roads, classified them as good, fair, or poor, and the ones that, that I classified as poor, whether they were a part of the, of this program or not, you got a bad road, you have a bad road. I've identified what that problem is. The ones that are associated with this bill number seventeen forty-seven, on the first pass, I have, when it says description of damage resources, I have gravel truck and vacuum truck traffic. This one I pulled out of the blue. An additional course of seal coating would help solve this problem. Where I have to go from now is to identify, some of them are more complicated than seal coating. Seal coating's pretty simple, because I know what seal coating cost me, so I can sit down and just put those numbers together. There are some instances to where it is more complicated, will require sub base improvement, be it through a cement slurry, a lime slurry, or Portland cement, and then material added on top of it. And there I have to do an estimation of materials, of equipment that's used, labor, everything that I would put together, as though I were, I would assume, I'm looking at you, Counselor, that I would assume as though I were a contractor that was bidding the job, except there's no profit built in, it's just the cost of my equipment. And that is something that we'll deal with on an asterisk basis, and I will turn those in at a slightly later date. This will allow Leanne to take my information and have it input, inputted in a format that is consistent with the requirements of the bill seventeen forty-seven, if that means anything. But that's what I've done. My job is not nearly as difficult as Commissioner Powell's, because he has several more, but I have, I have several roads. And that's where we stand. When we looked at it the other day, we discussed it, I was, I was initially not in favor of doing this, and then I moved in favor, and then I got on the fence, and then I fell back in favor. I think it's something that potentially could be of some value, and my anticipation is, may not be the case, is that we may qualify for more money than we want, or than we can do. Well, when we say we want, because we have to match twenty percent. So there may be a point. When this all is said and done, right now, if we qualify, we get a minimum of eight hundred and something thousand dollars, but that's out of two hundred and fifty-four counties. So I think when we go through with this, the decision that we may end up having to make is exactly how much can we justify from the standpoint of match? You agree with that, Mr. Powell?
I agree.
That's my take.
Mr. Roger talking about it.
We could end up with over a million dollars. I mean, very possible. We found out Friday. It's a very possibility we could, and it could be a couple of them.
Yes.
And just so the public understands and knows, that money can only be used in a zone, and only for the roads that are fixing the zone. And it can't be used on any other roads in the county, just so people understand that. You know, that because we get a grant doesn't mean that money can go any road in the county. And it's going to be, I guess, probably the challenge is putting these roads together. It's going to be the biggest thing. But I think it's worth going after myself.
The, the program, just for those that were not a part of that, is if, let's say we get a million dollars, and we have three years to complete projects, and by the time we complete our projects that are required, we have two hundred thousand dollars left. We've done them, we brought them in under budget. Then at the end of three years, as I understand it, then we can repetition TechDOT to take that remaining two hundred thousand dollars, submit to them additional projects, and use those on additional projects. But we just can't take that money and use it on another road, even if that road's been impacted by the continuous development of the oil industry within Wilson County.
And it's also going to be like a forty-five, maybe a sixty-day turnaround to get you reimbursed on what we found out Friday off, if not a fourteen day. That was from TechDOT, TechDOT itself, that, itself, Friday.
And our understanding is, is that if we have a project that costs a hundred thousand dollars, needs to be individual projects. If, if, if it's a hundred thousand dollars, then what we will do is we'll turn that in and they will reimburse us eighty thousand dollars, and that's where the twenty percent would come, would be at that point.
And they're not going to be, they said too, they don't have the time, the manpower to come out and do all the inspections on, on these roads. Now, if they, we need some help, they would help, for design or engineering, but far as actual onsite inspections and stuff of that nature, they don't even have the, nowhere near the manpower to do that, you know? Also, they, of course, they, they want to encourage it to combine some of these foreign market roads or state roads, we can use some of that money for that also. But they never, they didn't say, would declare who's going to pay that twenty percent.
If you have money left over and you want to work on them, tell them.
But whether the county pays that twenty percent, or the state pays that twenty percent.
I would think at that point, they ought to just shoot away with the twenty percent.
Instead of working on the railroad, I don't have any more railroads on my list.
I don't need a motion to do the, the grant funding for Associate Sen. Bill seventeen forty-seven, two thousand thirteen, Texas Legislature motion. Commissioner Powell, Commissioner Wiley, all things. Item number seven, discussion of potential actions. Discussion of potential action shall occur regarding the hiring of the law firm of Vicar Thaupes Delgado and Ossos, L.L.P. of Austin, Texas, to provide legal services to Wilson County for the proposed project pursuant to Sen. Bill seventeen forty-seven enacted in two thousand thirteen by the Texas Legislature, chapters two-two-two and two-five-six of the Texas Transportation Code and other authorities to obtain grant funding from TechDOT for the planning, construction, reconstruction, maintenance of public roads, bridges, and culverts in the county damaged by the exploration, development, and production of oil and gas.
I'll make a motion that we make them our attorney.
Motion by Commissioner Wiley, Secretary of State, Commissioner Powell, all things.
Chuck, did I get anything wrong in what I just said, from the standpoint of how I took our conversations?
No, sir.
I just wanted to be sure.
I want to tell you that there's, it sounds like the time to get going on it.
I was a little concerned about the flurry of concrete.
The flurry?
Yeah.
The slurry of concrete?
You got anything wrong there?
When you talk about the visit on Friday, are you talking about a visit with TechDOT on Friday?
We had a conference, and they had a presentation.
Oh, okay. Who was talking?
He's an area engineer from TechDOT.
Okay.
In this area.
Okay.
Of the U-Valley Extension Service.
Very well. Okay. The idea of the twenty percent match, I forgot to look at the economically disadvantaged list before I came, but I thought we had all looked.
We're not on it.
Wilson County's not on it. So the twenty percent match is the rule, and the, the idea of them writing a check for eight hundred thousand dollars is, that's not how it's going to go. You're going to do the work and submit invoices, and they'll pay you back twenty percent of the invoices. And we had a discussion when we had our conference call.
Eighty percent.
I'd say twenty.
Twenty.
Yeah.
They scared me for a second.
Eighty percent you get reimbursed on, which means a twenty percent match, which means you actually, you're spending money. In-kind donations don't work. And we have to measure the in-kind prohibition, in-kind prohibition on the match against whether your in-house labor, if you're doing the work. We talked about that. That's a, that's a costly reimbursement figure that's up in the air right now. All right, now, getting back to the idea of which roads can be fixed with this money. There are differences of opinion between groups and lawyers about how to draw the Our position is more cautious than some other theories that are out there. We talked about it on our conference call the other day, but for the court, I want to go over it again. I've attended both webinars, this again on the webinars that TAC put on, and the County Judges and Commissioners Association. And me and Tom Pollan have been looking at the statutes that seventeen forty-seven created or revised, as well as the TechDOT regulations that were enacted to implement and administer the grant program. And those regs get TechDOT approved on twenty-one November of this year. So our, our advice is more conservative or cautious than some of the other theories that are going on right now. To draw the zone is an exercise to balance two competing kind of philosophies. The ease of drawing it, you know, how to do it on a map, and how to explain it on paper with the English language. Measure it against the tax increment financing element, or what we call captured appraised value element of the project. One of the requirements is that when you create a zone that lasts for ten years, you extend it for another five years. In contrast to some of the other theories that have been discussed publicly across the state, our law firm, for me and Tom Pollan, we don't see any express language in those statutes that allow a county to opt out if it doesn't like the zone, or if it doesn't give enough money, you know, whatever the reason is. Other tax increment statutory schemes in Texas have language built in and a procedure involved where you can opt out. Now, there is some language that says the zone terminates, but how do you terminate it? We're taking a more cautious position that if you decide to create a zone, then we think you should be aware that you're likely stuck with it. Okay. Now, if we have new law that comes in, like an AG opinion, or a TechDOT regulation, or rule enacted subsequent to now, then great, you know? You'll be able to quit the zone. But we, we do not see that in the express language of the statute. And when you're working for and with the county, and when you're a county, y'all know the basic rule, you've heard it a hundred times since you've been in office. Counties are different than home rural cities. You look at what the law says you can do, or reasonably implies that you can do, and we just don't see any express language in these laws that allow you to opt out of the zone. So, the other, the other, the second issue is, well, when you look at the language of the chapter two fifty-six statutes, and measure it against the two twenty-two statutes. The two fifty-six statute in the Transportation Code sets up the grant program, and TechDOT posted it in the legislature. The two twenty-two statute is the statute where the county has to do the work. We, we do not see any language that allows you to ask, any express language that allows you to ask for money, and then when you file your grant application, for any road that is not included in a zone. All right? That is different. That is more conservative, that's more closer to the best than some of the other theories that are circulating right now. Those theories being, you read a part of the statutes, and it, and it seems to say that you can create a little zone, a little C-tris, Cedars, a little county energy, transportation, reinvestment zone, with one, at least one project inside of it that you're going to ask for money on to fix the road zone. And the rest of your projects can be outside of the zone. That is a widely discussed, uh, theory, tactic, discussed twice on the webinar, and want to be candid with you. It's my understanding that the number two engineer for TechDOT, Mr. John Park, told the Conference of Urban Counties Roundtable on Road Infrastructure, said the same thing in the Permian Basin meeting that was held right out a month ago. It's hearsay to me, but the people that were telling me this, I trust. Okay. And then during the second webinar that TAC held last week, one of the commentators said that they checked with TechDOT the day before, and yeah, that was TechDOT's position. All right? People at TechDOT are saying you can do exactly that. You can create a little zone, okay, with one infrastructure project in it, limit your captured appraised value effect, all right? And then when you get to doing your grant application, you can certainly ask for money to get that road fixed inside the zone, but you could get fifty other, or many other road projects that you ask for funding on, grant funding, and they're outside of the zone.
So does that mean the contiguous zone that we've put together does not have to be as large as we've done?
If you go by that theory, it does not. But let me suggest to you that we've looked at the language of the statute, and we do not see any express language to support that position. All right? So, I want to be candid with you. There are fine lawyers and, and county groups across the state that are advocating doing exactly what the TechDOT staff is saying to do. We can't rely on what somebody in an agency says, because until the agency, the Transportation Commission rules on something with formal regulations, or you get an AG opinion, or the legislator passes a law, people talking about how, how the law is, is no more different than I am right now. It's my opinion. So, yeah, it turned out that a county drew a small circle and had one infrastructure project in it, called that the zone, and then submitted the grant application, and asked for money on that road, that single project inside that zone, but asked for a bunch of other road project monies that are outside of the zone. What is the risk there if those people are wrong? Okay? Here's the test for me, as a lawyer representing live a client. What I worry about is this. If somebody at TechDOT wakes up in a new world, if there's pressure from above or below or outside, wait a minute, that's not the right way to interpret this, this rule, this law. They could say, and I, and there are two risk issues. Number one, and I think this is a remote possibility, but I can't put the risk at zero, I'd say it's remote or minimal, they could say, you know, you have a grant application, and you're asking for twenty roads over here that aren't inside, you're asking for money for, for a bunch of roads that aren't inside the zone, you are no longer an eligible applicant, you're kicked out of the pool. Your money goes back into the pool for reallocation. Now, that, I don't think would happen, but I can't tell you, I can't bet my life on it, okay? I think the more likely scenario would be, well, we're looking at your grant application, and as to this project, projects that you've got inside your little zone, yeah, you can use your bank account, your grant funding bank account for that, but all these other ones? No, sir, we're not going to let you have the money for that. And so that other money that you don't use goes back into the pool for reallocation. So, I want you to know, we've done some preliminary mapping, we have a general services agreement with you, and we were asked to do it, and we've done, worked with the staff on the preliminary mapping, and we've got it. You've got, you've got lots of roads, and they're spread out, okay? So, I want you to know that there is this difference of opinion based on the risk analysis that's out there. You know, all a lawyer can do is to lay it out for you and let the court decide, excuse me, which option fits the risk tolerance and risk, risk management practices that fits for your court. We don't recommend identifying any road that you're going to ask for money on to fix. We don't recommend any of those roads not being in the zone. Now, so how do you draw the zone? To include those roads, well, you can link, you need, the statutes don't tell you how to draw the zone. You can use surveyor, beats and bounds descriptions on recorded instruments in the courthouse, you can use natural boundaries, you can use roads, but we think with the GIS capabilities of all in us, the more accurate way to do it, the more modern way to do it, is take the center line of a road and go X number of feet on either side, and that's your zone. Now, why do we say X number of feet? Well, uh, to draw it skinny, to draw it narrow, to avoid, or not avoid, but to minimize the captured appraised value effect of the, of the project. And we talked about that the last time I was here, and I gave a, gave a, probably longer than necessary detailed explanation by email, but if the zone lasts for ten years, each year, you're going to measure the increase, if any, in the appraised value of that real property in the zone. I read real property to be broad, including minerals. And you measure that increase against the base year appraised value of the real property in the zone, and the percentage increase gets, of the tax rate, percentage of, the increase percentage gets measured against the tax collection revenue. And I can explain it, explain it in more detail later, because you saw that email that I gave, that I laid out the reference to. That goes into the, into the restricted account, can only be used for transportation projects we contend inside the zone. The base year value goes back into unrestricted. The base year value of the tax collection goes into unrestricted. And what you do is, you do that every year for ten years. So there is a need there. Most counties view the captured appraised value effect, or what we call the tax increment financing effect, as a kind of a thing to try to minimize or lessen. And so to draw the zone skinny, the easiest way we know how to do that is to take the center line of the road plus X number of feet on either side of the center line. Now, some counties would say, well, we just want the travel road surface and the bar digits. So go center line and wherever that, that is, don't go across somebody's fence onto their property land, in other words. Okay? We don't recommend that. The whole concept of the, the tax increment financing and the captured appraised value is to really have some appraised value captured, okay? So, we're worried that if the zones are drawn so narrowly, that just include the travel, the travel surface and the bar digits, and it's, it has zero appraised value, because technically the government's not supposed to tax the, you know, the road, you know, that happens occasionally. But if you go a little bit farther than anybody at TechDOT that were to challenge us, we'd be able to say, now, wait a minute, wait, it's just not the road, it's, it's across the bar of our fence. There's actually some appraised value, but it's captured, but it's minimal, because nobody's telling us how much captured appraised value is required. That's not in the statute. So we're saying center line plus a hundred feet would get it done. I'd say center line plus fifty, center line plus seventy-five. But when you draw the zone in that manner, it looks a little unusual, it looks like a tentacle or spaghetti, but...
Well, I thought you would say the only fifty feet. What, what's changing now, signing five to a hundred feet?
I gave all three of them.
Oh, you gave all three of them?
Oh, it'd be your choice. Now, to say a hundred in my mind is the safest, from a risk standpoint, but you might not want to do that. You might want to go center line and fifty. Center line, I've got a county that's going to go center line and fifty, just a little more.
From center line, you're talking if the road is forty feet wide or fifty feet wide? You go center line to twenty-five feet from the right away, and then another twenty-five feet from the fence line? That's, that's fifty, right? So you're only going twenty-five feet into the property owners, right?
No, I think we're talking about fifty foot from the fence line into the property, not from the...
No, you're talking about...
Center line, center line fifty feet, or center line seventy-five, or from the center line a hundred. It's up to y'all. But I want to make sure that you understand my recommendation to, I don't know how wide all your roads are. I doubt that you're...
Very rare, I mean...
Yeah, okay.
You could use the definition of the highway, which is from fence to fence, and then add whatever footage you want it to.
But that, but that would be, to draw the zone, to include all of the roads that you're going to ask for grant funding on, makes it look unusual. It's... you're gonna ask for grant funding on, makes it look unusual, it's just not a block of land, it's all over, you know, it's these little strings that are connected to each other, has to be, you dig this?
So, the more you add to it, the more you give on the tax increment rate? And then it can hurt us in the long term in our Avalon tax...
Not, okay, what it boils down to is, whatever the land area is of the zone, then... Let's go through the math. We had a long discussion the last time I was here, let's just assume for the sake of argument, that on the base year, the real property of the zone is captured, the appraised value is a million dollars, okay? And let's assume in year one of the zone, it went up to three billion dollars, so there's a two million dollar increase. So, what percentage of the three billion year one value is attributable to the base year, a million? Well, you put one billion over three million, the base year's thirty-three percent. What part of the three billion year one value is attributable to that two hundred, to two million dollar increase? Well, you put two million over three million and that's sixty-six percent, or point six six seven. You remember, the appraisal district, you need to remember those numbers, and the county would need to remember those numbers. And then, let's assume you're using the figures from our, from the hypothetical that I sent after my last meeting. Let's assume that your effective, your combined tax rate is forty-five cents per hundred, okay? And let's say the, again, the base year, excuse me, the year one value has increased to three million, well, how many one hundred dollar valuation units are in three million? There's thirty thousand of them. So, you take thirty thousand of those valuation units, hundred dollar valuation units, multiply times your tax rate of point four five oh, and as I remember my math formula, my arithmetic, you come down to a total tax for the real property in that zone of thirteen thousand five hundred dollars, okay? A third, remember, our base year, one-third, a third of that goes to unrestricted.
Unrestricted.
Sixty-six percent of it, or point six six seven, goes into that tax increment account, that special seventeen forty-seven tax increment account that we say can only be used for infrastructure projects on land inside that zone. And so, you know, you're talking about nine thousand dollars. Now, if the land values jumped up big, you know, or the, or the base value was, the base year value was bigger, you know, the numbers would change obviously year to year. But that's, that's the way we understand how to do math. So, the larger the zone, conceptually speaking, the bigger the land area of the zone, the bigger thinking problem that the Commission's Court has on this captured appraised value effect. If the property values don't go up, then don't do the math, there's nothing to do.
It would be a good program to have a broad zone if the county were in a position from, from the standpoint to say, okay, we're gonna pay roads, it seems to me, or we're gonna do this or do that, because then you could have a big block of funds that could go in there. But that could affect other areas, it seems to me, and that's the reason that I don't think we're ready for that.
No, I...
So, this little one we have is gonna have a minimal impact.
Yes, sir. And what would the impact be? Well, okay, the appraisal district, well, I'll represent the appraisal district, but I would, I would be saying that they'd be coming to the county and say, wait a minute, can you help us with this? Can we look at your map and where's Leanne? That's probably what happens. So, the idea would be, okay, they operate off of track maps, ownership maps, and they've got the roads on their maps at the C, at the appraisal district. Sometimes their, their flat maps are based on copies of instruments which indicate a land owner owns to the middle of the road. Sometimes, you know, people get taxed for the road, sometimes they don't, but let's assume that they do not, so that the task, the appraisal district would be to say, alright, where is this road, this sewn road? Let's take a look at the county's data, let's take a look at our data, and let's see, we've got the ability with the aerial GIS maps to draw on the scale to show exactly, you know, from the center line out, fifty feet or seventy-five or a hundred, whatever it is, and they can look at their track maps and say, okay, from the county's right of way, which would be outside the bar ditch, to the edge of the zone, some mathematical calculation that can be performed, estimated, you're looking at maps, but they do that all the time, just like you do. And the square footage can be, or acreage can be figured out. And, and that, that would be the land that would be subject to this captured appraised value calculation. Well, when you look at the end, the end map of where the zone is, I've got no idea what that land area would be, but it would certainly be skinny, it would be a lot less, but captured appraised value effect would be the next.
We don't have time to secure an AG's opinion on this.
No.
The thing about it is, the road with fifty foot added to it, that's still not in the spirit of the law. I mean, even if it picks up the law as far as the deal, it's not the spirit of the law, the spirit of the law is to collect money over the entire area that's called the zone. So, if you went from fence to fence, that, you know, eliminated that, that, either one of them, I don't know, you know, it's still gonna be, if it's contested or if somebody, you know...
The point that you're making is, is well founded. The spirit of the law is something that we've been concerned about a lot in terms of how to balance the competing principles of how to draw the zone versus captured appraised value. So, we've come up with the idea that from the center line out, but out far enough to be clear that there's acreage in the zone outside of the county's right of way. Now, if somebody wants to criticize a county that does that, well, there's nothing in the law that says, tells us how to draw the zone.
Well, how, what if they come and say, well, your whole zone is gonna be the whole property instead of just fifty feet on the road? What if that comes up?
It could come up, Commissioner, but the law doesn't say that, this is your zone. It doesn't say.
But if, I'm just saying if, if it were to come up and say, we did the fifty feet and say, well, that's not gonna work, you have to do the whole property.
Then we just back off.
Well, that's the other deal that we're gonna have about opting out if they come and say you have to have the whole property. Will we have an option on opting out of that or not?
I don't think that you could, I don't think the law reads that you could make a county, make a whole property after you've drawn a narrow skinny zone.
They may disqualify you from the deal, but they couldn't, they couldn't at that point say we had.
Now, that, that little zone that we have, that snakes all across, would, it would appear, would remain in place, and so there would be some minimal funds that would flow into that. I would anticipate, and I don't know anything, I just would anticipate that if there are a fair number of counties that set up a zone to be a part of this and, and they are not allowed to be a part of it, then the state may take a look at allowing you to opt out, but I don't know that. I think there's gonna be a lot of people that are gonna say, hey, I set this up because I thought...
What he's saying though, if you draw the zone the way, the way you proposed, and they say we won't accept that, we need this in, we don't, we don't have anything to opt out of for us, the rest of it, they're disqualifying us for what we have.
Yeah, but, but the zone we create will already be created, so that zone will stay.
If they, if they turn it down.
If they turn it down, the zone's already created.
Well, you have to differentiate between the zone and the grant program. They may say something on the grant program that's adverse to the county, but the zone is a...
Well, we have to set up the zone in order to apply for... You know, they wouldn't make it easier or simple.
And I don't think they're gonna really look at that that difficult, where that...
I believe the Tax-OD engineer probably spoke to that.
Yeah, I don't think they're gonna, as long as it's implemented, turned in, you have the zone, you're showing that effort, you have the report turned in, that's gonna be the big key, the report, because they emphasized that prior.
And they didn't talk nothing about how we create that zone, nothing at all.
The statute, the laws are silent.
There's still that...
Other than, it has to be particularly...
Sure. Because that attorney that was there said that there's still a lot of unanswered questions in there that nobody still don't know.
That's right, and we, me and Pollan concur with that, which is the reason why we're trying to play it a little closer to the best in terms of trying to be safer if one of these things comes out.
Yeah. Do we have any, have any other counties are gonna apply in this same matter?
Someone doing like we are.
Yeah, I would say that most counties, many counties who attended and listened to the webinar are gonna do just like TAC recommends. Take a small land area, draw a circle, or however you do it, have one infrastructure project there, and then ask for grant funding on many road projects that are outside of the zone.
Well, any way we went with this, without establishing just a zone, you know, could be overturned by a court, and just any, that way that they're talking about, the way we're talking about, could be.
Yeah.
So, the money's gonna be minimal, eight hundred thousand and maybe something over a million at the most. So, if you established, if you picked out an area that has the worst roads, you could easily spend a million dollars in a couple of months. So, if we did what he was doing, hoping that we could do it all, and they said, no, it's gotta be spent within that zone, if you come back and did that and then you yourselves make a deal as to, I wanna help you on your roads or whatever out of the budget, in other words, instead of spreading the millions throughout the two precincts and whatever...
We have to prioritize the projects, and so if we have twenty projects that we come up with, and let's say fifteen are his and five are mine, however it works out, and they don't fund all of them, then what they will do, as I understand it, is, tell me when I'm wrong, is that they'll come in and say, okay, you're funded, here are the projects that are approved, and they could all be his, I mean, it depends on what the priority is, and those are the only ones that you can do.
Now, they did say private, because I asked the question, you know, we have a list. Now, let's say that we get ready, and we get approved, and we start on road number one, and we ask that, we're in about, okay, what if number five gets to be worse than two, three, and four? And they said you could jump and go fifth, five. Okay, but you gotta talk to them that, you know?
Yeah.
You gotta, you gotta, you gotta get there okay.
Yeah.
That's what we were trying to find out.
Well, and that's important, because as I said...
That's good.
We said that we could do that, that was with Tax-OD.
Well, again, that's a Tax-OD engineer, I don't call them local engineers, but district people.
Local district.
That would, that's helpful.
Because I asked that question, you know... Well, that's important to me, because if the first five projects are precinct two, and then my project's number six, and I have to wait for him to complete all five, then I've got a road that's horrible that's getting, that's gonna get really bad before he can complete all five, where, where I could start number five the day he started number one.
You could do that, that's what he was saying.
I guess what my point was on the double, if he said the majority of the county's gonna build the small zone instead of the truck configuration.
The way to say it is the TAC recommendation.
The TAC recommendation.
That's good words.
And I guess the legislature created this, and built seventeen or seventeen, and it doesn't, it doesn't speak to any of these things that we're talking about. So, with influence on the legislators and everything, if all of the counties or the most of the counties are going for this other way, we may be just as safe to go that way as to go outside of what the other county, we'd have the, the support of TAC and the other counties in influence of the legislature or whatever.
You may well be right.
But I, you know, like I said, it's not, it's not a simple thing.
I know, from my perspective, and I'm sure from the Commissioner's file as well, I was not willing to, because essentially what we'd had to have said, if we were gonna do a bigger zone, is everything south of ninety-seven, eighty-seven would have to be in the zone. And at this point in our county, I'm not, I can't do that, I'm not even ready to consider that. So, so what we did with the area snaking through allowed us to, to do with a very, very minimal, you know, a little bitty impact as opposed to something larger. It may be that doing, you know, one area and going forward might be sufficient.
Well, you've heard basically what we're talking about, you mentioned fifty to seventy-five to a hundred feet, what would be your recommendation that we go with? What do you feel best about?
Looked at your map, our office prepared, based on what we handed, gave us, we prepared some mapping for you, and because of the spread out nature of it, I recommend multiple zones, center line and a hundred feet.
Multiple zones, and is this map done with multiple zones?
No, the data we were given indicated the roads that, based on her contact with precinct staff, the roads that were in place, that fit the statute or definition, meaning the primary grade because of traffic associated with the...
Basically to get the prodigious deal down the highway.
So, how many zones are you talking about?
You don't want, we were thinking of, you know, a zone, you're gonna think, actually...
You wanna lay that out, Leanne?
Yes.
But the idea would be multiple zones, because we believe the statute has to have multiple zones, and then, I've got some, and that's the three and a half I have that I can give to the rest of us. Yes, ma'am, I believe. It's hard to read.
And I see it, this doesn't count all of the connectors.
Right, this is just the roads that will be on the project.
We colored them by precincts two, three, and four. Two is blue, three is red, four is green, and so because of the geographic spread, there might be a way to create multiple zones.
Just for you.
For more efficiency and to, to eliminate all the blues of two, greens of four, which is worrying.
Basically, you took out the state and farm market road that we had.
All, all this is are y'all's roads that would be on that list.
The one that we drew up had a state, farm market road.
It has connections, yeah.
And Commissioner, you can use a state highway to connect roads for the zone. You don't have to ask for the state highway to be approved by grant funds, alright? You can use a river or another natural boundary, we don't recommend it, you can use the survey lines, you can even use the county line, but we like the idea of using roads because those are things that people can look at and see.
Well, do you have a feeling standing here looking at this, is how many, I would assume, that you'd probably... that you'd probably set up a single zone for this route up here, I don't know that.
What, I wanted to ask about that road. What's the name of it, Coffin?
Coffin.
Has that road been degraded primarily because of all the address?
Yeah, he has, he has a disposal well, so it has vacuum trucks under it.
That would be difficult to link up without adding, uh, appraised value. So, so the idea there would be a single zone.
So, when you look at precinct two, tying his hand together, assuming he wanted to do that, isn't all that difficult because it's all pretty close, it doesn't take much to make this, to make his snake on through. Because there's not, there's not many, you don't have a lot of gaps. Mine, I've got these two roads over here, and this little group right here, and then this over in here, and so I don't know, and then this one over here. So I don't quite know how.
Let's, let's make sure that you understand the distinction, there are really three options. The simplest is the TAC option. Draw a single zone with one project inside of it. Good solid one spot. And then ask for grant funding on the grant application for all the rest. That is it, that is, that is the recommendation that's gonna be made.
By TAC?
That's what happened on the webinar. Option number two. Well, if you wanna draw a zone that includes all of the roads that you're gonna ask for grant funding on, then you cer, you certainly don't wanna draw a big circle in the middle of your county because of the captured appraised value effect. So how would you do this? If it was a single zone, you have to connect...
Which is what we did on this one over here.
Okay. That means you have what we...